...of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting Westbrook City Council, the order roll call please.
Crowder.
Here.
Raleigh.
Here.
Height Meyer.
Here.
Lees.
Here.
Waterman.
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
Support.
Motionless support, any discussion? Call.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Carrie, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support. Motion to approve consent agenda items one through twelve, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on September eighteenth. Accept Officer Ed Parker's resignation for a police department, accept resignation from firefighter Kerry Falcon, accept resignation firefighter Haley Wagner, approve Essence Anthony a termination from the fire department, approve sending up to three firefighters to Des Moines area metro fire ground training. Sean informed me this morning that probably only two will be going, but told him we'll leave the three in there in case somebody else goes. Approve payment to Frank Millard and Company, approve payment to GB and Construction, approve payment Electronic App com- Applications Company, approve payment to Altech Industry, approve payment David Schmidt Construction Company, and approve planes list as percent of the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Ready discussion?
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Carrie. Staff reports, Dan.
A couple things, uh, first of all, I, when I was going to Dubuque last week, the city car acted like I wasn't gonna make it up there. Um, but I made it back and it didn't do it, but I don't think anybody should be taking it out of town for a while, so we're gonna be spending, unless you have a different idea, we're just gonna pay mileage for people that have to go anywhere until we see what we wanna do next budget year. Unless you're feeling generous and wanna buy one now, I don't, I don't really care, but...
What do you think the problem was? I mean, could it have just been bad gas or something?
Run the scan tool on it, I thought maybe a coil, but it has no misfire, no gas issues, noth- nothing going on. And it didn't do it just under a load, it was doing it floating downhill with no power to it, trying to downship that, got a bad feeling it's in that transmission.
Do we need to take it back to where we got it from and...
Yeah, we- I just haven't, we haven't taken it anywhere yet. I mean, we can take it and we'll have to pay diagnostics and get a price and see what, what we're talking about.
Well, that's probably what checking into at least.
Can you check the fuel pump?
In the tank?
It's probably in the tank.
I, yeah, 'cause that's a Chevy, isn't it?
No, it's a Ford.
It's an O eight with a hundred and six thousand miles on it, and it's got a rust hole ready to, a rust on the back that's ready to be a hole, so I don't know how much you wanna spend on it, but... We'll at least investigate it a little bit.
Anybody have anything for Dan?
Uh, no, I'd just like to say thanks to all my employees and the new hires, and we're really getting a lot of stuff done and appreciate how everybody's hopping from one job to the next, and we're really getting a lot of stuff around town caught up.
I appreciate it too, 'cause you are doing it, and I've been dri- what I've been driving around seeing, yeah.
I'm not the only R, there's more than me, that's why I'm thanking...
I mean, you, yeah, you can say all, 'cause I've noticed.
Anybody have anything for Mike? Jesse?
Uh, a couple things, we did the GTSB grant last Tuesday, uh, we had three cars involved with it. Um, just West Burlington cars, we had two OWI contacts, um, and several other traffic violations. Total numbers of all three agencies that worked, there were fifty-nine vehicles stopped. Um, had several, um, arrests and citations and a lot of warnings given out for different things. And we got a, a note from a citizen in Burlington that observed one of our guys do a traffic stop, and he gave us a compliment of how we handled ourselves and how we handled the car, car load of people that was in there, and we did arrest a few people out of there for violations that they had, but he just wanted to pass on to myself and the department of how good they handled themselves, and it worked out pretty well for, for everybody that was involved that night.
Anybody have anything for Jess? Tom?
Uh, I've got a busy week of inspections coming up next week, and it's also fire prevention week. Um, the last week, Mike and I have pretty much been playing, uh, I think we've got each other on speed dial, working out a couple, uh, building issues that overlap into the streets and, um, water sewer plants. Um, and I think it's been really good working with Mike, so I just wanted to let you guys know, you know, it's a great choice, and him and his guys are really with the fire department helping us out, and we really appreciate it. Hose testing was completed today, we had a couple sections go down, and I'm getting some prices on replacing those. Um, like I said, fire prevention's next week, lined up with the schools to go up and do our, our annual thing up at the schools with fire drills, and also having the little kiddos come up to the fire station for tours, uh, that's gonna be on Thursday, and then Thursday night, uh, next week, we have, uh, we're doing two of the unity nights, last year we did one, we're doing two this year for the, uh, football team, and we'll have our first one next week on Thursday night.
Are you doing anything with, uh, red ribbon this year?
I haven't seen anything on red ribbon this year, uh, have you seen anything Jess?
I got an email sent out with some things to return from them, but I haven't, I haven't, we had, we didn't do the parade last year.
Oh.
They kick it off like we haven't passed, so I just know it's the last week there in October, but that's all I know.
Anybody have anything for Sean?
Now, I don't wanna be mean on this part, but, you know, I drive around and I see the houses like on, well, you use the example, you'll know which one I'm talking about, is on Houston and Ramsey.
Yep.
On a corner, yeah, okay, and that stuff just keeps on laying out there and laying out there and laying out there, time after time after time. It seem like somebody goes and they do pick it up a little bit of it in time, but they don't get it all together to get it out of there. And it, and it seems like it just keeps on getting worse at that time.
That's when the mayor and I were, uh, he had sent me a message, and I already contacted the property owner who actually lives in California now.
So...
And I've been working with her daughter because she, without going into a lot of it, it's easier to work with her daughter than her. And it's a family member living there, they actually brought a dumpster after our discussion over there, and I was able to catch the guy that comes and goes from that property.
Yeah.
I caught him, had a discussion with him that everything out, that's out there, lack of a better term, it looks like Sanford and Son, and, you know, we'll remember that, um, but I talked to him about that property condition and that it need to be resolved immediately. And I'm working with the daughter to get that resolved.
See, and that's, that's the thing I just sit there and look at, we got a good community on most of it, and most people like to pick up, clean up their area, you don't see anything like that, and then we get our taxes jacked up sky high, and they get them lower, and we could understand that, is that they should be taxed heavy, you know, and maybe we should get a deduction if we keep stuff nice, and...
I don't set taxes, right?
I know, but that's the way I feel, you know.
Otherwise mine would be a lot lower.
It, it gets annoying when I go around and I see something like that, it's just a total mess.
Interesting, it was, it was difficult getting with her, getting our schedules to go inside, she, the daughter is a nurse out in California, and so with her work schedule, she was finally able to get with me after I'd sent another notice to the mother, and she's working on it, she's on top, she wasn't even aware of the condition of the property, and I said, "Well, have you read the letters?" And she got a hold of one of them, and she's, she's working on getting that cleaned up. It's a family member that moved in there and moved into the house and moved the house outside, I guess would be a way of explaining it, which makes no sense to a general person, but I'm on that, I'm on that one, getting it cleaned up. Um, there's another one that's been a eyesore in that, Dan and I've...
All right.
Managed to get that dealt with, and there's construction going on to re- resolve that issue already.
There's a few, and I, it's just using that one for an example, and I saw it in there, and I just...
Understand.
May it look better with the ivy on it than it doesn't, uh...
That took me a year to get the, that big old, uh, shrub on the corner, it took a year to get that worked out with, uh, Stu's Lawn Service.
That's all.
Anything else? Kelly, you got anything going on?
Not tonight.
Leslie?
No.
Rod?
I do, I'd like to mention a couple things actually. First of all, I wanna thank you, thank the city for allowing me to go to, to Dubuque, to the League of Cities thing again this year, it's very interesting. I took a couple housing classes, uh, it was kinda interesting, Hans took one of them with me, attended a class, uh, the League of Cities, talked about how they work with our state elected officials and, and our legislators, that was kind of an interesting class, and, and, and I knew this, but I'd forgotten that even though they, they spend a lot of time lobbying our representatives for us on cities' issues, that we don't ever pay out any money, we don't have any RPAC through the League of Cities, and I, I guess I found that quite refreshing actually, that, and I forgot that we didn't do that, because obviously most people lobbying our elected officials are handing them checks, so anyhow, I appreciate getting to go to that. I really enjoyed it, and thanks the city for allowing me to do that. One other thing I wanna mention, I don't know that this is a proper place or not, but earlier tonight on our consent agenda, we accepted the resignation of another police officer, and as you know, we've had two or three of those lately, and it's too bad, but it happens, and it's not unusual for us to go through that kinda stuff sometimes. However, on one of our officers, a very nice young man, and I was really hated to see him leave our department, but I understand, he had an opportunity to go and, and work for Des Moines County Sheriff's Department, and according to the information provided to us, was allowed to make about seven thousand more a year he's gonna make in payroll, which makes perfectly good sense, and he's better than himself, has more opportunities, chances to do other things, uh, maybe more shift, different shifts. But there's one part of his hiring away from us that I guess I object to, and I don't know who we need to talk to about it, but I guess I'm hoping that Mr. Gifford, you, or maybe even Hans as the mayor, can carry this forward a little bit. The county paid him a five thousand dollar bonus to leave our department to go to theirs. And somehow or another, I can't help but think that they didn't take my city of West Burlington, county tax dollars, and give it to take this officer, and I guess, I think somehow or another, I, I think that's wrong, I think, I think within the county, we oughta have at least some kind of agreement that we don't go in and, and, excuse my English, but rape and pillage each other with bonuses using my tax dollars to take away my employee, and I think that was wrong, I don't know who we need to tell, I don't know how that needs to stop. Uh, I, Officer Peterson's a wonderful guy, and he's gonna benefit, and it's great, and the more money and the more hours, better hours, I understand, but the sign-on bonus, I got a real issue with, and, and I, I'm hoping either you guys can direct me to the right person, or maybe you guys will carry that forward to somebody, but I, I don't know what you think about that, Hans, but I, I just think it needs to be addressed.
I'm planning on bringing it up, I'm gonna start attending some supervisor meetings again, they don't like me showing up, but...
Well, Jesse has enough trouble trying to keep us into good officers without fighting, to me, we're fighting against our own money, and it's just, that's...
I agree with you a hundred percent, it's, you know...
We always talk about trying to have a joint meeting between Burlington and us and the county supervisors, and it never seems to be able to get scheduled and work out right, but that'd be kind of a place to bounce that idea around if we could ever get that done, but, I, as you know, I'm about done, but, you know, just that, that leaves a really bad taste in my mouth. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Well, I appreciate it, I appreciate you going to the league meeting this year, and I think we picked up some valuable stuff.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Rick, Dan?
Nope.
Chris?
Nope.
Al?
Nick?
All right, next thing on the agenda is, I got a proclamation to read, and it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all age, of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm, and whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life, and whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as a, as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often under-reported, and whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and within intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than forty years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens, and whereas our communities' achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Westbrook City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty nineteen to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Westbrook, Iowa, and urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. Would you like this, if I can make a comment?
Well, yes, my name's Bert, I'm an advocate for, for, um, supervisor Johnson Peterson, uh, he would just like to begin to the council for, uh, acceptance, uh, proclamation. Have some calendars and some flyers by the hand as well.
Sure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Do I make any other comments? All right. Appreciate you coming, Mike. You wanna put an official seal on this?
I can't, I don't necessarily have to do it.
If you want, if you want to, you can put a seal on this and you can bring it up tomorrow, or, all right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Put it in a folder for y'all, so... Alrighty, thank you, thank you for coming. Alrighty, next thing on the agenda is, uh, anyone wishing to address the council matters are not on the agenda tonight. Alright, nobody rising, new business, item number one is to consider payment Snyder Engineering Associates, for engineering services related to the lift station project, any amount of three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Motion to approve?
Support.
Motionless support, any discussion? Roll call.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Motion Carrie. Item number two is consider a resolution entering into a twenty-eight agreement for installation of sewer line to the Des Moines County landfill. This has been a project that's been in the works for probably about close to going on two years, between, uh, the landfill trying to find a, uh, more reasonable way to eliminate their, um, leachate, and in the past, and what they're still doing, they have to haul the leachate to Burlington Sewer Plant to get treated down there, and that, uh, is costing the landfill, and every user out, out there uses it around, uh, hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, Al, a couple of years ago, approached, approached me to see if we could probably take that leachate, and I said, "Well," at the time, we were going through the process of building a new plant, and I don't know what the, you know, capacities of the plant was going to be, and so we started talking with the engineers, the si- uh, landfill engineers and, uh, and our engineers, and they've come up with, uh, basically a twenty-eight E agreement to where a new line would be run from the landfill along Washington Road with a lift station in there, back to our, uh, gravity, uh, main that's, that's on Washington Road, and they would have, they would pay for the cost of that and, and the upkeep of that also over the time, and that's, the engineer's been into the design stage and planning stage. Now, the, uh, the state has been in, got involved into it also, they threw a little sprinkle into it here not too long ago, saying that our sewer plant was already running over capacity, which we found out that they didn't move a decimal point in the right spot. So, we're not running over capacity, we're still way, way, way under, and, uh, so this is the point where, a couple of weeks ago, at the landfill, uh, committee meeting, at, uh, uh, they approved the twenty-eight agreement, that's before you now, the Solid Waste Commission did, and that needs to be approved by the city, and then we can really start, uh, the good planning and getting this construction done, probably next spring, they were hoping it gets done this fall, but that'll be, uh...
When I was reading this at home, can't read it here because I can't get on, but, uh, I didn't see where we talked about the, the capacity issue though. I, I know we're saying it's not an issue, but I don't see anywhere where anybody shared any numbers, maybe I missed it, but I...
That, no, that isn't in there, because if, if we don't fix that, the DNR won't let us even do it, and so this twenty-eight E is, if we get to do it, which means that'll be fixed by then. They had to re, they had to re-rate our plant because they rated it way too low the first time, and we're ru- we're only running a hundredth of what the capacity is. I've got some spreadsheets over there, but they'll give you a headache, 'cause they're...
Well, I was under the opinion when we opened that up that we had plenty of capacity.
And we do.
And we could, we could put twenty-eight houses out to Derry's and fifty houses out to Schottenkirk's, and, and we wouldn't have any issues.
Yeah, it isn't, it's the capacity of ammonia, it's not the capacity of sewage, it's not, I mean, every little thing has got its own limit.
Sure.
And the ammonia limit somehow got set in the wrong spot, and so the engineers are confident that they'll get that switched with the DNR, but they gotta jump through some hoops to do that. Um, we also tested the leachate over about a year's time, and there's really nothing in there that's gonna hurt us, and, um, you know, Rod's been working with them from the get-go, so Mike was kinda surprised, 'cause he didn't know anything about it, 'cause Randy and, Randy and Rod had worked on it over so long, but, uh, yeah, I think it'll be a, obviously it's gonna save every landfill user some money, and it'll put some money into our, they're gonna pay our regular sewer rates, we're gonna have a, a meter on there, so they're gonna be...
That's my next question.
They're gonna be paying, we'll get money into our sewer fund.
Revenue service.
Okay, so, so us working with the county, right?
That's with the Solid Waste Commission.
Okay, no, my point was us working with the county, and they're stealing our officers, but that's okay.
Well, they have nothing to do with that.
Motion to approve.
'Cause Henry County is part of it too.
All right. Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support, any further discussion? Roll call.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Carrie. Item number three is to consider resolution entering into a twenty-eight agreement with Des Moines County Information Technology Department. Now, we're dealing with the county.
Actually, this one benefits us, 'cause we had one before that just worked with, uh, us paying them, and the county IT director was like, "Well, Brad goes over and helps them every, not very often, but every once in a while," and he said, "Well, you got, you should get paid for that while you come over and help us," and so that's all this does is adds that, so it's a, it's a same amount going each way if somebody helps the other.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motionless support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Motion Carrie. Item number four is to consider purchase of additional licenses of the network manager for the IT department, any amount of two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. We just did this, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we approved, uh, buying licenses, and Brad miscounted, he needs an additional fifty licenses.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman. Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Carrie. Item number five is to consider participating with the city of Burlington and Des Moines County in the purchase of fingerprint machine at the Des Moines County Jail, any amount of four thousand and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents, and plus a six hundred and eight dollar and forty cent annual fee. Jesse and Sean could probably talk about this, uh...
Our last, uh, two thousand and four was the last time we bought a, um, fingerprint machine, and at that time, it was just Burlington, and the sheriff's department went in and purchased that, Kelly provided that with me today. Um, this time, they're asking for twenty percent from us, and then Burlington and county pays forty percent of each one. Um, basically, they're running off of two thousand and seven windows on it, I do believe it was, so that's way out of date, way up, security issues, and if it breaks, nobody's there to fix it, so, and the Department of Public Safety through Iowa says that you have to use this machine, that's the only one they're gonna support on their system, because we have to go in through their IT service to support the that, so... That's where we're at with it, and the amount of money that we spend on maintenance fees with the old one will cover this in a couple, three years, three and a half years, I think is what we figured out, the difference between the maintenance fees of the old machine and the new one.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support, any further discussion?
Uh, from the picture I'm seeing, this, you don't get your fingers in ink anymore. No, it's all electronic, yeah, touchscreen.
Touchscreen, okay.
If, if we did not purchase this machine, we'd probably have to go back to the old ink cards, and they don't wanna deal with that mess.
Roll call.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion Carrie. Item number six is to consider a resolution awarding... I'm number six is to consider a resolution awarding a bid for the twenty nineteen South Gir Avenue Trail Project in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and it goes to Jones Company.
This was a really weird deal. We haven't done this in a while, but the, and I don't think I've done it since I've been here. But the DOT is, since it was a, it was a DOT grant, they just did the bid letting and did all of that stuff themselves and just told us who got it. And so, uh, but, and then they have some new electronic way to handle all the, all the contracts and everything, which has been, which has been a real problem for Hans and I and anybody else that tried to use that thing.
I'd like to really see the project get done, but the last two days has been a nightmare dealing with the DOT and trying to, to get electronic signature set up.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Pretty much in and out financially for us.
Pretty much. We, this, the match is getting split between us, the college and the hospital. So there's some money going out, but most of the money is grant money and then even the match is getting split three ways, so it doesn't end up to be a lot. Um, we'll, we're just gonna pay the bills and get the reimbursements and we'll invoice the college and the hospital when it's all done for what they owe us for the match.
And wasn't there some kind of agreement made on the main, the maintenance of this trail?
Yes. The, the hospital's gonna maintain the part that's on their property and the college is gonna ma- maintain the part that's on their property and we're only responsible for the little bit that's on ours, which isn't very much. Little bit on Division Street and a little bit pa- past the college.
News to me.
Mike's already had it there.
News to me. Nobody informed me of it.
Well, and that's the reason I brought it up because there's, there's potential new council candidates in the audience and there's a new public works director. We talked about this like a long time ago.
Yeah. Well, we applied for the grant like five years ago. I mean, it's, these federal things take forever and.
Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion Carey. I'm number seven is to consider a resolution awarding a contract for the twenty nineteen Agency Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. This project, uh, Mike can, uh, tell you more about it, but it's, uh, Long Agency Street in front of the Honda Shop. The, uh, sanitary sewer pipe is either collapsed or shifted to where it's not draining right and, uh, to, to come under the threshold of the, uh, going out for having to go out for bidding process, the project has to come in under a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We received two quotes today, one from Keakuck, uh, Keakuck, uh, paving or?
Contracting.
Contracting, uh, for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And the other one from, uh, Four Seasons for a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And it needs to get done because the sanitary sewer, it wasn't a problem, uh.
When the developer put it in.
When the developer put it in.
Apparently was not inspected because there's a thirty-three, about a thirty-three inch belly in it, in its gravity. So what happened is after Brad Derry purchased Honda dealer, when there wasn't much going on, with the car worse and then all employees and business, Randy's had this issue before me and we've been jetting it and jetting it and said it was his problem and he can't find a problem and just kept leading the problem, so I had it televised and, uh, the whole, uh, main just does this. So when you go in and jet it and pull everything out, the water runs in the wrong direction back to Brad Derry. Um, there's no room to bore on top of it because of utilities and pretty much gotta be removed and a new, whole new line laid to grade. Something that was not known about because Honda is the only one on this at the point right now. And there was not enough business to fill the big main up and the manholes beforehand to figure out there was an issue until we started doing the business we're doing over there. So we are right now, at least once a week, are jetting that to pull water back out of there. And that was why my concern of getting something done, because I can't have that sewer jet every week in sub-zero weather. It's just a project we gotta get taken care of and gotta get done.
Do we know who originally put that in there?
I don't know who, who even did the project. Who bought the ground and installed it. I know Shipley's was the contractor installing it. I don't know who engineered it or anything like that and they're out of business and, uh.
And it was all bored at the time.
It was bored at the time and back then when they were boring, I think they've found out since that when you run a boring tool through and you grab a section of pipe, you got a bell. And a bell can be, I don't know, inch and a half to two inch bigger than the outside of your pipe diameter. So when they pull a bell through, making a hole, stick the next one on, pull it through, every twenty feet, potentially, there's nothing supporting that pipe. So from the very beginning, every twenty foot section would have a slight belly to it. And depending on the soil type, I mean, it could have just sunk after that, not having the right. Because you don't do compaction, you don't put rock, you're just pulling it through what, whatever kind of soil type you have. And I don't know and we can't find out, I don't know who did it or if any inspections were done and like we've done now, we've had to have it camered and elevations and we've got it back that it's just completely up and down and up and down. Simplest way would have been to install a small lift station at Honda and slide it two inch down this main and force it up to what we need, but with DNR, what'd you say, Dan? Could be up to two years before they approve it?
It'll be, it's a, yeah, going through the DNR process, it'll take.
They would not allow us just.
This was kind of run through as an emergency situation.
This is being, yeah, run through as a maintenance.
Because we don't want to be jetting that in January. It's not gonna be. We need to get it fixed.
The old, uh, barn issue with the cars they're at, was it Bauer and the trailer court? Still hooked to the trailer court, you know, and he shut their water off. They're, they're wanting to put a service in and I've had Sean contact the bank trust fund and I've had them hold off for now because if they would have hooked to that and we would have had to, if they came in at the wrong height properly, possibly had to redo their whole service. So they're still waiting to tie into that to get broke away from the trailer court with their sewer service right now too, so.
Well, that's where we're at. We took, took bids and with the low bid being a hundred and nineteen, eight fifty, it's under that threshold, so we don't have to go out through that. Or should say we took calls for the, for the bidding process.
Are we gonna take this out of the sewer fund?
Yeah, it'll come out somewhere. Where's the code for it? Sewer.
Motion to approve. A low bid.
Motion with support. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Carey. Am I having a little business?
I just got an email from the, our engineer must be watching the meeting because Lindsay says that for that landfill thing, there's also gonna be a treatment agreement with what they can put out, like we do for Borzy and ABD and the factories. We have an agreement with what they can, the limits of what they can put out, so she reminded me to tell you that there's gonna be another, there's gonna be an agreement with the landfill and what they can send us.
Good for her. That's pretty good service right there.
Motion for charters. Anyone wishing to address council matters that we did discuss or did discuss tonight? And, and motion adjourned.
Don't move.
Support.
Always a favor.
Aye.
Be adjourned. Thank you.